Good morning and welcome to the Board of Supervisors for March 21, 2006. I will begin our session with a roll call.
And Supervisor Parks.
I'm here also. We are now at that time on our agenda for a moment of affirmation and we don't have anyone with us this morning to do some special words, but I do have something that someone sent to me and I'd like to read it. It was received from Irma Bombeck. It's a thought that she had written and I'd like to read it now. It says, "If I had my life to live over, I would have gone to bed when I was sick instead of pretending the earth would go into a holding pattern if I weren't there for a day. I would have burned the pink candles sculpted like a rose before it melted in storage. I would have talked less and listened more. I would have invited friends over to dinner even if the carpet was stained or the sofa I would have eaten the popcorn in the good living room and worried much less about the dirt when someone wanted to light a fire in the fireplace. I would have taken the time to listen to my grandfather ramble about his youth. I would have shared more of the responsibility carried by my husband. I would never have insisted the car windows be rolled up on a summer day because my hair had just been teased and sprayed. I would have sat on the lawn with my grass stains. I would have cried and laughed less while watching television and much more while watching I would never have bought anything just because it was practical, wouldn't show soil or is guaranteed to last a lifetime. Instead of wishing away nine months of pregnancy, I'd have cherished every moment and realized that the wonderment growing inside me was the only chance in life to assist God in When my kids kissed me impetuously, I would never have said, 'Later, now go get washed up for dinner.' There would have been more 'I love yous,' more 'I'm sorrys,' but mostly given another shot at life, I would seize every minute, look at it and really see it, live it, and never give it back. Stop sorting the small stuff. Don't worry about who doesn't like you, who has more, or who's doing what. Instead, let's cherish the relationships we have with those who do love us. Let's think about what God has blessed us with and what we are doing each day to promote ourselves mentally, physically, emotionally. I hope you all have a blessed day." With that, let's go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance. Supervisor Bennett, would you like to lead us?
Hand over heart, ready, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
We have a motion and a second on the minutes and thank you, Roberta, for getting them It's nice to have them in the packet. Seeing no objection, that passes and we'll go now to Agenda Review. Mr. Johnson, do you have some comments?
Madam Chair, we have another good week here with very few adjustments. The only change is Item 24 where we have received revised pages one and two from the
Thank you very much. So we just have the one change to Item 24. Anyone have any other comments or changes regarding the agenda? Okay, so we'll adopt it as changed with the change to Item 24. Seeing no objection, that passes. We now move on to Consent Calendar. That's Item Number Seven.
Any cards?
I don't have any cards on the Consent Calendar. I'm afraid I do have a question, but that's okay. The only question I have is regarding reimbursement on the General Plan Amendment, which is Item Number 11. I just note that we're taking what I understand to be 60% of $110,000 from our road funds to help pay for amendments to the General Plan and I'm just always concerned when we take from the road funds and if there is another source out there, I'd rather the road funds be used to pave roads than to do studies. So I don't know how the rest of the board feels about this, but maybe what I can do is wait on this one and discuss it. I don't know if it's urgent and discuss it with staff. So if there isn't an objection, can we hold Item 11 and then go ahead and approve the others and we'll continue that to our next meeting.
I'm moving.
There's a motion to go ahead and approve the Consent Calendar, 10 through 17, and holding Item 11 then.
And I just want to check with Mr. Johnson, do you have any reason why Item 11 is any problem with holding it? Did you know? I'm unaware of it either way. I don't see anyone in public work.
All right, so we have a motion and a second and no objections. The Consent Calendar then passes as amended and now we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is our Public Comments and I have several Public Comment cards. Our first one is Chloeen Marson followed by Michael Murphy. I'm sorry, did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yes, it's Chloeen Marson and I'm at 1220 West Robert in Oxnard and I'm here representing St. Paul's United Methodist Church of Oxnard on behalf of the Children's Health Initiative. At our church council meeting just two days ago, we did vote to support and endorse an establishment of Ventura County Children's Health Initiative. We refer to our faith that teaches us concern for our neighbors, for the strangers in our midst, and especially to take care of our children. This country, it should not be the only country in the developed world that does not provide health care for its people and yet it is and at least establishment of a children's program would give us a good start in that direction. Our congregation is in a good position to help with enrollment. We have a tutoring center as well as we house Head Start program, several classes, and two small ethnic congregations within our facilities also. Our society, we know, can really be judged by how we treat our children and this program, we know, is working well, effectively, and fiscally sound in other counties and we feel that a comprehensive program for children is a necessary thing in our own county. It's the right thing to do.
Good morning and welcome to the Board of Supervisors for March 21st, 2006. I will begin our session with a roll call. Elizabeth, uh, Rivera.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Michaels.
Here.
Supervisor Flynn.
Here.
And Supervisor Parks.
I'm here also. We are now at that time on our agenda for a moment of affirmation. And we don't have anyone with us this morning to do some special words. But I do have something that someone sent to me, and I'd like to read it. It was received from Irma Bombeck. It's a thought that she had written. And I'd like to read it now. It says, "If I had my life to live over, I would have gone to bed when I was sick instead of pretending the earth would go into a holding pattern if I weren't there for a day. I would have burned the pink candle sculpted like a rose before it melted in storage. I would have talked less and listened more. I would have invited friends over to dinner even if the carpet was stained or the sofa faded. I would have eaten the popcorn in the good living room and worried much less about the dirt when someone wanted to light a fire in the fireplace. I would have taken the time to listen to my grandfather ramble about his youth. I would have shared more of the responsibility carried by my husband. I would never have insisted the car windows be rolled up on a summer day because my hair had just been teased and sprayed. I would have sat on the lawn with my grass stains. I would have cried and laughed less while watching television and much more while watching life. I would never have bought anything just because it was practical, wouldn't show soil or is guaranteed to last a lifetime. Instead of wishing away nine months of pregnancy, I'd have cherished every moment and realized that the wonderment growing inside me was the only chance in life to assist God in a miracle. When my kids kissed me impetuously, I would never have said, 'Later, now go get washed up for dinner.' There would have been more 'I love yous,' more 'I'm sorries,' but mostly given another shot at life, I would seize every minute, look at it and really see it, live it, and never give it back. Stop sorting the small stuff. Don't worry about who doesn't like you, who has more, or who's doing what. Instead, let's cherish the relationships we have with those who do love us. Let's think about what God has blessed us with and what we are doing each day to promote ourselves mentally, physically, emotionally. I hope you all have a blessed day." With that, let's go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance. Supervisor Bennett, would you like to lead us?
Hand over heart, ready, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the minutes, and thank you, Rivera, for getting them to us. It's nice to have them in the packet. Seeing no objection, that passes. And we'll go now to Agenda Review. Mr. Johnson, do you have some comments?
Madam Chair, we have another good week here with very few adjustments. The only change is Item 24, where we have received revised pages one and two from the healthcare agency.
Thank you very much. So we just have the one change to Item 24. Anyone have any other comments or changes regarding the agenda? Okay, so we'll adopt it as changed with the change to Item 24. Seeing no objection, that passes. We now move on to Consent Calendar. That's item number seven.
Any cards?
I don't have any cards on the Consent Calendar.
Okay. Move approval?
I'm afraid I do have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But that's okay. The only question I have is regarding reimbursement on the General Plan Amendment, which is Item Number 11. I just note that we're taking what I understand to be 60% of $110,000 from our road funds to help pay for amendments to the General Plan. And I'm just always concerned when we take from the road funds. And if there is another source out there, I'd rather the road funds be used to pave roads than to do studies. So I don't know how the rest of the board feels about this, but maybe what I can do is wait on this one and discuss it. I don't know if it's urgent, and discuss it with staff. So if there isn't an objection, can we hold Item 11 and then go ahead and approve the others, and we'll continue that to our next minute's agenda?
My motion.
There's a motion to go ahead and approve the Consent Calendar 10 through 17 and holding Item 11 then.
And I just want to check with Mr. Johnson, you have any reason why Item 11 is any problem with holding it? Did you know? I am unaware of it either way. I don't see anyone in public work. No, there's Ron, no problem?
Yeah. Great. All right, so we have a motion and a second, and no objections. The Consent Calendar then passes as amended. And now we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is our Public Comments. And I have several Public Comment cards. Our first one is Chloeen Marson, followed by Michael Murphy. I'm sorry, did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yes, it's Chloeen Marson.
Thank you.
And I'm at 1220 West Robert in Oxnard. And I'm here representing St. Paul's United Methodist Church of Oxnard on behalf of the Children's Health Initiative. At our church council meeting just two days ago, we did vote to support and endorse an establishment of Ventura County Children's Health Initiative. We refer to our faith that teaches us concern for our neighbors, for the strangers in our midst, and especially to take care of our children. This country, it should not be the only country in the developed world that does not provide health care for its people. And yet it is. And the, at least establishment of a children's program would give us a good start in that direction. Our congregation is in a good position to help with enrollment. We have a tutoring center, as well as we house Head Start program, several classes, and two small ethnic congregations within our facilities also. Our society, we know, can really be judged by how we treat our children. And this program, we know, is working well, effectively, and fiscally sound in other counties. And we feel that a comprehensive program for children is a necessary thing in our own county. It's the right thing to do. Thank you. I think someone else is reading the proposal itself or the resolution, so I won't refer to that as such.
Thank you, Ms. Marson. Thank you for coming down. Our next speaker is Michael Murphy, followed by Albert Egert.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning.
Michael Murphy, this is my wife Vera. Our 18-year-old son is an inpatient at Hillcrest Psychiatric Facility, Hillmont. On February 14th of this year, the office of public guardian was appointed as his conservator, replacing us, as we felt they would be more capable of looking out for his best interests. On February 15th, another patient was going around challenging others in his words to a brawl. Our son exchanged some words with him. Five minutes later, the patient came from behind and sucker punched our son in the face. Despite this happening in front of the nurses' station, no one on staff came to his aid or assistance. Later, our son went to staff and told them he was in a lot of pain. Not until February 17th were x-rays taken. The x-ray technician told our son it looked like he had a fracture, but it needed to be verified by an M.D. The fact that this was a Friday and the start of a three-day President's Day weekend is no excuse for the fact he didn't get to see a doctor until Tuesday, February 21st. In the meantime, his assailant was allowed to mix freely with the general population of patients, intimidating our son and others, and bragging about his misdeed instead of being isolated. Our son finally had surgery on Thursday, February 23rd, to have his broken jaw wired shut. This was eight days after the assault. The wires are scheduled to be removed April 3rd. Meanwhile, numerous phone messages from us and his case manager at Hillmont to the public guardian have been not returned. Our son's care and treatment, or lack thereof, has been unacceptable. We feel we have been misled and ignored by caregivers and guardians. Because of this, the original parental guilt that we felt at the time of transferring conservatorship has grown immensely. I see some supervisors here that I know were at the National Alliance for MLE walk last year, and appreciate their support. But I just want you to know that right here, closer to home, there's some care that's lacking, at least in our case. I just don't want it to happen to any other patients, their family, or loved ones. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I might, Mr. and Mrs. Murphy, if you have time, if you would step upstairs to the fourth floor, to my office, and meet with Joyce Taylor. I'd like her to get a copy of your comments and see what we can do, take a look at the case. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Long. I know the individuals live in Camarillo. I'm really sorry to hear that. Albert Egert, followed by Lenore Arab.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, Board of Supervisors. I am here to continue and finish reading my March 7th document into the county record for preservation. I am sure you are aware that there are over 3 million lost statute colorable law books in the Library of Commerce and presently over 60 million statutes. Knowing that statutes are not law, see Uniform Commercial Code 1-1036, and your state compiled law to match, but for argument's sake, calling them law and considering that ignorance of the law is no excuse, and that attorneys at law are representing themselves as experts of law, then I challenge you, or any judge or prosecutor, to list from memory all the statutes verbatim. The judges and prosecutors have staff, attorneys, and paralegal personnel doing research second by second. Barring their ability to do so, I challenge any tribunal to prove that I am an expert of the law and statutes and can list from memory the 60 million statutes in order to charge me with violations of colorable law, known as statutes. The evidence presented supports the warning spoken from Jesus to wit. Holy Bible, King James Version, Matthew 23, verses 27, 28. "Woe to you, scribes and Pharisees, hypocrites, for you are like whitewashed tombs, which are indeed, appear beautiful outwardly, but inside are full of dead men's bones and all uncleanliness. Even so, you also outwardly appear righteous to men, but inside you are full of hypocrisy and lawlessness. Please be advised: In the event you cannot produce lawful evidence to the contrary, should you or your agents, brokers, or intermediaries torment me further, you are my surety and bond. Thank you for your patience. I eagerly await your response. Govern yourself yourselves accordingly. Cordially and without prejudice, Albert Alfred Egert, California State Citizen, P.C. to Ventura County Council, Ventura County Board of Supervisors, Ray Cotton Esquire, Ventura County District Attorney, Federal Bureau of Investigation, and the California Attorney General's Office, Department of Justice." And that completes that point. But I have a contest for County Council, because County Council, you are the tax assessor's representative and defense counsel, correct? Okay, well, silence is...
This is an opportunity for the public to comment. We don't engage in questioning.
Well, the contest is to the public. Where do you, where does this county purport and have a lawful right to take an inalienable right and convert it to a privilege so they can regulate it and tax it? That's my contest to you. And that I would like an answer from. And when could I expect a response?
Well, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
While you still haven't answered me, when can I expect your response to that contest?
Well, I can't give you a response personally.
Well, then I'll put it in writing, and we'll just take it to the next level.
Thank you very much. Lenore Arab, followed by Reverend Alonso.
Yes, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to have a moment of your time. I'd like to speak on behalf of comprehensive health coverage for children. I'm a healthcare professional. I've spent the last 25 years of my life actually studying and researching and being active in cancer and diet. I've also had the opportunity to live abroad for a while where comprehensive healthcare is a given as part of a civilized society. And I live in Ventura. I have five children. I've been very engaged in our community and have seen situations that I wonder if you're familiar with. An 11-year-old child who has a growth on her eye that she tells her family about, and they say, "Don't tell a doctor because we can't afford the health care." A 15-month-old child who's been in the ER seven times in this brief period of his life for issues that should have been taken care of in primary care or prevented completely that lead to a tremendous avalanche of health costs. First of all, I think you'd agree with me, children don't belong in the ER. That shouldn't be their exposure to the medical system unless it is a critical situation. And we are putting aside problems that will be very expensive. So families that are spending their nights there, not going to work the next day, I mean, this is a question of moral, medical, and economic costs that are adding up. So I'd really like to tell you, there are very many of us that really think that comprehensive health coverage for children is an immediate issue. It really isn't something that we can afford to put off for any of these reasons, and would really appreciate your taking that to heart in your decision this week. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down here. You're from Thousand Oaks?
Yes.
Sorry. Thank you. The next is, good morning, Reverend Alonso.
Good morning.
And then after you will be Alice Linsmere.
Good morning. I come before you on behalf of the Santa Paula Ministerial Association and churches and laypeople that are trying to support the comprehensive health insurance for children. And I want to read to you the endorsement that we signed recently about this. Where areas throughout Ventura County approximately 32,000 children are without health coverage, thus exposing them to more serious and expensive chronic conditions, and limiting their academic achievement, costing millions in public dollars, and resulting in hospital emergency rooms, other health facilities, and medical providers often being overwhelmed by the number of uninsured patients. And where areas of approximately 5,000 children have no recourse, public or private, for affordable, quality health coverage. And where areas of lack of health insurance is leading cause of personal bankruptcy, destroying the dreams of thousands of families. More than 6 million Californians are uninsured, the overwhelming majority, eight out of 10 of whom are members of working families. And where areas of public health and prevention services are among the highest priorities in Ventura County. And the rising number of uninsured underscores the need of Americans of every walk of life and every point of view to join together to raise awareness of this problem and find solutions. Where areas, the Children's Health Initiative resolves in millions of additional dollars in funding for health care through increased enrollment in existing state and federally-funded programs such as Healthy Families and Medi-Cal. And where areas, healthy kids, have been proven to dramatically reduce the number of uninsured children at a county-wide level, and thus comes close to achieving a just and sustainable health care system that leaves no one uncovered. Therefore, we resolve that the Santa Paula Ministerial Association, joining with Clergy and Laity in Unity for Economic Justice of Ventura County, urge all of you and the organizations throughout Ventura County to join together to support the Children's Health Initiative, to extend health coverage of 0 to 18 to those who have no other recourse. And I just want to add that as a person that goes throughout our neighborhoods, visiting families that are really underserved, I see a lot of the children in real need. And I know that for many of the people that are working on this resolution, and I know that the steering committee will be tomorrow, you know, voting on two different options, I just want to remind you that even though when we talk about these issues, the thing is about money and numbers, dollars and numbers, this is not about that. This is about people. This is about persons first, and this is about children. And children are truly under our responsibility. And as, you know, people of good faith and people that are really working on behalf of the community, we need to think about these children that are underserved. And I want to urge everybody to put aside the, I know it's hard. Numbers and money are always hard to deal with, but I really want to encourage everyone to help us with providing a complete, comprehensive, you know, health insurance for the children that are not served well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor, Madam Chair, if I might, thank you so much for being here. I appreciate your comments and your advocacy. And I would like to offer, if I might, to meet with you and the Ministerial Association so we could talk about the...
Oh, please.
...healthcare provided to children in our county.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Alice Linsmere, followed by Myra.
Good morning. Thank you for listening to us over and over on this. I am here on behalf of the Clergy and Laity United for Economic Justice, but also as a person of St. Thomas Aquinas in Ojai, who has also signed the same endorsement that was read. So I'd like to bring in their endorsement, which they have signed. And just to say, you know, thank you for listening to us. And we have listened across the board directly from, thank you to Supervisors Bennett and Long for talking to us directly about the options on the table. We've also listened to the professionals and gone to conferences and read research. And most importantly, we've been listening to the impacted families, which have moved us to look at the tenets of our various faiths. And in light of justice, we maintain our commitment to the comprehensive health coverage for our county's children, especially the most vulnerable. And we continue to offer our support to be able to do whatever we can, especially we're enthused about starting health fairs for enrollment to make sure that the children who are eligible for the existing programs can be started right away on those programs. And we believe in the adage that now is the time, and we are the ones. So we also encourage you, as you go towards the vote, to also keep this in mind and support the comprehensive health coverage for children. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment card is Myra, followed by Cruz Bernardina.
My name is Myra Fades, and I'm 20 years old. I'm a student who's evolved in my college, and I'm president of Metta, and also I'm volunteering programs to help out my community. It's funny, I still find time to work, because I also work in a local coffee shop. As you can see, my schedule's full, but I love these things that I do. But when it really gets hard, it's when I get sick. I worry how much it will cost, how much medicine it would take, and how much expensive it would be. Medicine does not run cheap. I know by the end of the day, I have to pay $200 to $300 for doctor's visits only. And the rest, well, I don't even want to think about how much it will cost. Sure, we have something at my school that is called the Health Center that helps students in medical needs for a low price, but that is not enough. I'm here to tell you that it's important to have health coverage for all children. My parents have been struggling with money. Not only do they have to worry in helping me with my school and books, but also they have to worry how much are going to pay to take my cyst out of my wrist, close to my vein. For some reason, it keeps on growing, and I wish I can take this out, but it's too much money. When you don't have health insurance, it's hard to be in this position. It's been five months since I have this cyst located in my wrist. I don't even know where to look to help me with my problems. I live with discomfort, and I live with pain each day. But I still go on with my life, even though sometimes the pain is too much, that I want to cry. School is already expensive enough because programs that are to help students are being cut. My parents and I worry about expenses for school and not for doctors. I'm telling more kids are getting sick. And sometimes, under the circumstances of my families, sometimes they don't even have enough money to afford it. I urge you to support and take action in favor of comprehensive with health insurance for all children. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. And while you're, I think would be more defined as an adult, it does also leave that very well open that we need not only for children, but those adults that also don't have health insurance. And while some, I think it was 27,000 children of the 32,000 in the county who aren't insured have the ability to get health care through the county, there isn't really a lot of programs available for adults. So thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you.
Cruz Bernardino?
Yes.
Followed by Letitia Villan, Villasnoa. Sorry.
Good morning. I will be translating for Luz.
Thank you.
Buenos dias a todos ustedes, miembros de la Mesa Directiva de Supervisores del Condado de Ventura. Mi nombre es Luz Bernardino. Soy ciudadana y residente de Oxnard por 25 años. Tengo dos hijos. El propósito de mi presencia hoy es de pedirles como madre de familia y miembro activa de mi comunidad que por favor tomen acción en favor del plan para un seguro médico completo y a bajo costo. Para nuestras familias que trabajan muy duro para sostener este condado en el cual vivimos. Para proveerles lo básico, nuestros pese a nuestros hijos.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Luz Bernardino, a citizen and resident of Oxnard for 25 years and a mother of two. The purpose of my presence today is to ask you all, as a mother and active community member, to please support and take action in favor of a comprehensive, affordable health insurance plan for our children. As hard-working families, our sweat and labor sustains and contributes to the economic growth of this county. Meanwhile, we continue struggling to provide the basics for our children.
Meanwhile, we continue struggling to provide the basics for our children.
Como madre de un hijo en la high school y miembro y representante del programa migrante, veo la necesidad que hay en nuestras comunidades, en la comunidad, de vivir una vida sana y digna con oportunidades de prevención y tratamiento médico. El tener un seguro médico es un derecho humano, especialmente en este país donde nuestras familias contribuyen con sus impuestos y su sudor al incremento de unos cuantos. Qué ironía, que se gastan más dinero en lo inhumano que en lo que es moralmente justo.
As a mother of a high school student and the president of the migrant education parent group, I see the necessity our community has to live a healthy life, the right to purchase a comprehensive preventive medical insurance plan for our children. Having health insurance is a human right, especially in this country, when we contribute with our taxes, sweat, and labor, while others are getting wealthier with our sacrifice. How ironic that more money is being spent on issues that only benefit those in peril when what is morally right.
Aquí les entrego unas cartas que son escritas por estudiantes de la high school que están a favor de este programa de seguro médico para todo joven. Espero que las lean y hagan lo correcto como miembros que representan a todo el condado, no solo a los que tienen más.
I would like to hand you some letters local high school students wrote in support of CHI describing their experience without basic health insurance. I hope that you read them and do what is right as elected officials that represent all members of Ventura County. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming, Ms. Bernardino. I apologize for calling you Cruz, that's Luz. Letitia Villasenor? Vallasenor? I'll work on that. Followed by Elizabeth Ramos.
I will be translating for her, too.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Letitia Villasenor, y soy una ama de casa con tres hijos en la high school. Soy miembro del programa migrante.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Letitia Villasenor. She is a mother of three children and member of the migrant program.
Vengo aquí yo a hablarles, representando a todas esas madres que están trabajando ahorita en el campo.
I come here to speak in representation of all the mothers that are working in the farms.
Por ellas, que muchos de sus hijos no tienen la seguridad de vida para poderlos atender, y andan dándoles a sus hijos medicinas que no son buenas para ellos.
Many of them, of whom don't have health insurance for their children, are giving them medicines that are not adequate for them.
Y muchos niños están muy mal, y yo quiero pedirles a ustedes como miembros de vodos directos, que ustedes pueden hablar por nosotros y pueden decidir cosas, que por favor nos den la seguridad de vida para nuestros niños.
Because of that, I would like to ask you, as a Board of Supervisors that represent our community, to please do something about comprehensive health insurance for our children.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Elizabeth Ramos, followed by Carol Dean Williams.
Good morning, Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Elizabeth Ramos, and I'm a community organizer for Promotoras y Promotores Foundation. We work with, our specific target area is the South Oxnard community. And in working with this community, I have realized that one of the many concerns and worries that our parents and adults of this community have is the lack of insurance for their children, or the lack of being able to provide for it. Ventura County's Children's Health Initiative is of utmost importance. Proper healthcare or lack of it affects a person's lifestyle in all aspects, let alone our children. Children need regular medical checkups to ensure healthy development. Preventative healthcare can easily detect conditions such as hearing loss, diabetes, obesity, et cetera. Without this care, treatable conditions can result in irreversible damage in our children's It is a fact that children with poor health miss school more often, and as well, they are unable to pay as much attention during class and concentrate than kids who have a good health, thus affecting their academic performance. Denying comprehensive healthcare to children would translate to our acceptance in setting up our kids for failure. Most of uninsured children, if not all, are sons or daughters of working-class parents, the thrust of California's booming economy. However, parents' hard efforts to provide for their children are not enough. With rising premiums of health insurance, parents are less able to get proper coverage for their children. Not only do we owe proper medical treatment to our children, but just as important, we owe it to the thousands of parents who are hardworking and drive our county and state's successful economy. Thank you.
Thank you for coming this morning. We appreciate your comments. Supervisor Bennett, did you want to comment?
I do. I'd like to just really thank everybody for coming and sharing your passion about making sure everybody gets health coverage. And, you know, the churches that have been involved, the people that are out there working in the community. And just a few things that I want to try to emphasize about what's going on here in Ventura County. Essentially, we will be talking about two programs that for 98% of the children will be essentially the same. In Ventura County right now, today, every child that walks in the door at our enrollment center, we are able to get insurance for. Every child, right now, today. Our issue, I believe, regardless of which of the two plans we end up settling on, and we may, if the initiative passes, by the way, in November, there'll be no discussion. A plan will be decided on, and it will be fully funded by the state if that initiative passes in November. But if the initiative doesn't pass, whichever of the two plans we settle on, the issue will not be whether we can provide coverage. That is a 100% commitment that we already have here, and we're just trying to talk about which way do we do it. But we're going to do that. The issue is the 32,000 children that are out there that are not getting enrolled in current programs. And that's where the churches and the community organizers could really help us. We are 100% committed to providing really good coverage. You have a sign there that says "Medical, Vision, and Dental." We're talking about providing "Medical, Vision, and Dental." And some people are trying to portray it that we don't want to do that. It's really just a minor difference between which way we do that, I would offer. But regardless which way we do that, the bigger problem is getting the word out. You mentioned, a woman back there mentioned the 11-year-old child. If that family walks in with that child right now, today, we can get them full health coverage, insurance, from either Medi-Cal, Healthy Families, or Kaiser, as long as they're under 300% of poverty. And our problem isn't that we don't have that available. It's available right now, today. Our problem is getting that family to come in and getting that done. So if you would pass that information on to us, we can take care of that literally, immediately. And so, just, we need to make sure that we focus all this great energy out there on the real issue, which is the enrollment and getting people to re-enroll after they get in the program and keeping their families enrolled. That's really the crisis in Ventura County, not whether there's something available. There will be something available in Ventura County that is a very good product for everybody. We'll have some healthy discussions about the differences with that. But there'll be really good product available, but it's getting everybody in. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Flynn.
We have new microphones here. I hope they work. I want to recognize Chloë Marson. She is a member of the Methodist Church in South Oxnard, and she's been a leader in social issues such as the one we're discussing today. For as many years as I've known her, which I won't say how many years that is, because I don't have her permission. En español, gracias para ustedes. Su información es muy muy importante para todo el condado de Ventura, la gente. Por favor, vengan a mi oficina para discutir el asunto. Gracias. Unas palabras. Mi dirección a oficina is in la escena de Channel Islands y Saviors, en el banco segundo piso. Gracias a ustedes.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Again, thank you for being here. I really appreciate that we have the advocacy and faith communities' engagement here and the offer to really work on the outreach and to hold health fairs and to make sure we're reaching folks who aren't aware of what is already available in this county. And I welcome Reverend Alonso and the Santa Paula Ministerial Association's engagement. And I would offer, when we meet, to really show you the Santa Paula Center for the Medical Home that is available, to really reach out to folks in the Santa Clara Valley who don't know that they already have access to this healthcare. And we just need to make sure that we're communicating. And that's really what, we appreciate hearing from you, and we know we're challenged with in the future. So I thank you for being here.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett, one more.
Just wanted to comment, I looked at my notes and I forgot to mention this. We had mentioned about joining other counties and doing this. And I would offer, we are already ahead of other counties right now. And that other counties cannot say, right now, every child you bring in the door, we can take care of. We can say that right now, today. And we have a backup plan. That's what we're really talking about. What's the backup plan if something happens with one of the three components that we're using right now? Just want to make sure that relative to other counties, how much more advanced we are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that concludes our public comment portion of the meeting, and we will now move on to our board comment. Oh, I'm sorry. Carol Dean Williams. Would you like to come up and comment?
Carol Dean Williams, 60-year resident Ventura. I called the grand jury yesterday. I want to document this morning. I called the grand jury yesterday, March 20th, 2006, at 1:15 PM, and a male voice entered the phone. I asked if he was a grand juror. He answered yes. I asked his name. He would not give his name. I asked to speak with the foreman. He said he was the only grand juror in the office. I'm giving a copy to your clerk. So it'll be very easy to identify the only grand jury in the office yesterday at 1:15 Mr. Johnson, you can shake your head yes or no. He made me a promise, your CEO made me a promise, and it's what, over a year ago? And he gave the options that we were going to settle this matter. And since we don't have a library director, this is the perfect time to do that. And I produced the volume of official documents to prove my point. He has them. They're all stamped. You shaking your head yes? So Supervisor Michael says I crossed the line. Supervisor Long said I crossed the line. Supervisor Bennett said I crossed the line. Supervisor Parks, will you go on the record that I've crossed the line? No?
Please continue with your comments.
Now, tell me what that line is that I supposedly crossed. Tell me, supervisors, there's three of you, that's the majority. The Board of Supervisors shall not prohibit public criticisms of the policy, procedures, and programs.
We do actually have a board policy that doesn't allow for profane language. So I'd like to make that available to you, since you were wondering.
Do you have a copy?
Yes.
You don't give it to me?
I certainly do right here, if you'd like. I'll give it to Reverend. We'll now move on to our next item on the agenda, which is board comments. Supervisor Flynn, would you like to go first?
Yes, my comments, though I prefer to have Judy Michaels.
Okay, so why don't you not go first? Supervisor Long, would you like to go first?
Yes, thank you. Somewhere here, I have a list of adjourned memories from my district of folks. And other than that, I don't think I have anything else to comment on.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Flynn, would you like to go now?
Yes, Madam Chair. As you know, last week I went to Sacramento and stayed there for the California State Transportation Commission meeting, so that they would see there was good representation from Ventura County. There were others there, just to make sure that these issues are kept in front of them, the issues on transportation. They're very important. 118 is important. But I want to read part of a news release to you, and it's an issue that bothers me, and I've told you before it bothers me, but I have some different information. As I met with the governor's staff, and maybe eight people from Boating and Waterways, plus Abra Strickland and her assistant, I learned something that I never knew before. And so I'm going to read this paragraph, so that you understand what I mean. And I'm reading because I don't want to make any errors. As I have already pointed out elsewhere, I met with the governor's staff last week to inquire about the funding for the Bisc in about a letter dated December 1st, 2003, in which the Department of Boating and Waterways asserts that the west side of the harbor is the only viable site. It needs to be pointed out that this letter was requested by Supervisor Chair then, Judy Michaels, and Len Krieger, so that the Boating and Waterways would appear to be closing off other options for the location of the Bisc. Supervisor Michaels did this without being authorized to do so by the Board of Supervisors, and especially me, since the issue's in my district. And she did so in a clear violation of the supervisory lines of authority in districts. In other words, she
In other words, she manipulated, and that's the big issue. She manipulated the public, and she manipulated the decision-making process. This is an important issue to everyone. Manipulation of the process. This was a major policy issue, and when it finally came to the board, we had no options. That was only, there was only one location. So decision-making was taken away from the board in reality. We had no choice, no options. Her criticism of Audra Strickland for involvement in this matter is off the mark. Audra Strickland represents everyone, Democrats, Republicans, and people from other parties. Once she's in office, you can't just say, I'm only going to receive a call from a Republican. Audra was simply doing me a favor by facilitating my meetings with the governor's staff. There were other issues also, which I met with a member of the Budget Subcommittee, Resource Subcommittee chaired by Senator Kuehl. And there's some confusion about the funding, and there still is some confusion on the funding. And the item was pulled at the Subcommittee level by Senator Lowenthal for further discussion. But also, the financing breaks down like this. Right now, the cost is 7.5 million. Two-thirds are supposed to come from Boating and Waterways and one-third from the county. And that one-third, if it is allowed in the state budget process, will be perhaps in the form of a loan. But there's still a lot of confusion there. But my main issue is this. Manipulation of the decision-making process. It should not ever be allowed again in this county of Ventura. You don't manipulate policymaking decisions. Madam Chair, thank you for making that, letting me make that statement.
Did you want to close in honor of anyone, or you're done?
I would adjourn in memory, ask the Board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. Thank you.
Supervisor Michaels, would you like to come?
Well, I don't think it deserves a comment.
Not necessarily regarding his, just your comment.
Oh, I will, because it's clearly an election-time ploy. I was not even chair at the time. Mr. Flynn can't seem to get his facts straight. If we would like to talk about manipulation, we're talking to the king over here of manipulation of the public process. And that's about all that I have to say to that, other than when I spoke with the governor's staff, they said they had no intention of withholding our funds and that the letter that would come down was merely a clarification. So I would suggest that Supervisor Flynn stop playing games and start getting on with making our harbor the quality asset to the voters of this county and the taxpayers that it should and can be. With that, I have an apology for the 9:30, which is also for the clerk. And that is that I forgot to bring my briefcase that has all of everything in it. I do have a copy, so we're going to praise Kathy. But I will ask the clerk to adjourn in memory of a list that I will produce sometime this morning. And again, I apologize. I've had project-from-heck going on in my house, and I had to meet with a contractor this morning, and I was running late. So I blew it. I apologize. But I will produce that list for you, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Michaels. Supervisor Bennett, do you want to comment?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to ask the Board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. I'd like to make a special comment about a service I attended in Ojai, Jim McHugh, and a very popular teacher in the Ojai Unified School District System who passed away from cancer at age 39 with two small children, fought cancer for five years. Nobody has inspired me more as a human being than watching him handle himself for those five years. He determined five years ago, when he found out that he had this cancer and the doctors told him that it would be fatal, that all he was going to do for the next five years was inspire all the rest of us about how to live our lives. And the eulogy from his friends at that service did more to remind me about how to live our lives than anything that's happened to me in my life that was incredible. So to sort of pass the mission on, he said, you know, he just wanted to remind everybody to be better friends than you normally think you can be, be better spouses than you think, be better parents than you think. And that's really what it's all about. And so to everybody here, I pass on the inspiration of Jim McHugh. With regards, I do want to emphasize one other thing to clarify the record. And that is that regarding Mr. Flynn's comments about the letter, I was the chair, I believe I was the chair at the time that we heard that. In doing my due diligence on the Boating Instruction Safety Center, I contacted lots of people to get information. And I did ask for information from Boating and Waterways because I was told that Boating and Waterways had verbally said that they would only fund a west-side location, they would not fund an east-side location. And doing my due diligence, I said, well, I don't want to rely on a verbal statement. I want, if that is in fact their position, I would like to have that in writing. I'm the one that requested that. I think it is completely inappropriate to characterize that as manipulation. I would characterize it as doing due diligence. If, in fact, that is a statement that they were making to us and to our staff, then we should follow up and make sure that we have that in writing. And that's in fact where that came from. So I want to make sure that that is out there in terms of the record. I would also offer that in spite of the clarification of the letter that was made last week, the letter and part of the letter from the Department of Boating and Waterways that still stands, which is that they will not fund an east-side location. At least, that's how it was reported in the press. I haven't heard that, but I believe that's how it was reported in the press. And that's really the essential piece of information. They did say that the west-side location is the safest location. And I find myself, I find it hard to believe that we would, well, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you very much.
I would just want to make one comment before you speak, Supervisor Flynn. And that is, I consider myself as wielding a very friendly gavel. But one thing that I don't want to go to is to just start discussing the motivations of people. So I would ask that in your comments, and you want to make further comments, that you not go to people's motivations.
Sure. I'm not talking about people's motivation, I'm talking about the truth. Now, it can be very easily checked out who was the chair in the year 2003. But let me say this. The governor's representative, when he was high in the governor's office, did say to Boating and Waterways, we'd like you, I'd like you to strike that word "only" in the letter. Only the west-side site will we fund. It's the viable site. It's the only viable site. That language will be changed, and we can expect a letter to come, I hope, within the next couple of weeks.
I think we've already received the letter.
Pardon me?
We have already received the letter, and it now reports it to be the safest location, as I recall.
Well, yeah, safest location. But when you get into some word like that, it's not "only." Safest can be debated.
But there probably isn't something more safe, is usually what it implies. I'll just go on to my board comments, and that's just to say that I was genuinely pleased with our study session on the harbor at our last meeting. I'm glad that we are able to have what I consider a lot of constructive input into what people would like to see at the harbor. And I think that was a real positive way to go forward. I'm hoping that we will incorporate a lot of the comments that we received, and I will work towards that. That's my role as a supervisor, see that we incorporate a lot of the public comments and find other avenues for public participation and other avenues for positive input on the harbor. And I even compliment you, Supervisor Flynn. That was the first time I've heard you compliment Ms. Krieger in a long time regarding her presentation. And it was a very good presentation. So I think that was all very positive. I would also ask that the Board close in honor of the people on this list. Note that it's Sebastian Bach's birthday today. And with that, move on to our next board item, which is going on to our 9:30 time-certain item. And that is recognizing the contributions of Matilda Ahern, and we also know as Ms. Tilly. So with that...
Will you come present, please?
Supervisor Flynn, will you assist us with that?
I've known Tilly Ahern for a long, long time, and she is such a great human being for all the volunteering that she does in helping people who need help. There was an article in the Star, I don't have the date on it, I'm sorry, but it was just recent. And let me just read it to you. 81-year-old has been feeding the military since 1982. If anyone could make 400 frozen turkeys fly, it would be Ms. Tilly, right here. The compat, energetic 81-year-old runs a food giveaway program for military families at the Navy Base Ventura County with the attitude of a drill sergeant and the focus of a guided missile. Here's her picture here. This is she. I'd like to submit this for the record. And we have a proclamation to thank you. She's 82 now. Recognizing Matilda Ahern, she's called Tilly. Whereas Matilda Ahern, Ms. Tilly, established a food program for military families at the Navy Base in 1982. Think how many years ago that was. She's been distributing food to military families since then, on the third Saturday of every month. Her food program serves 250 to 450 families a month and has served untold members of families since 1982. This article attests, there's some quotes in it, by people who receive this food, and the food is very badly needed. Military people, especially enlisted people at the lowest rank, don't make very much money. So Tilly, it's with my honor to recognize you, to give you this resolution. And I hope you put it on the outside of your house, which is on Channel Islands Boulevard, for a few days so everyone in the neighborhood can see it. Thank you very much.
I don't know what to say, other than thank you. Thank you, John. Serving the military is just my way of saying, or giving back to the military what the military has given to me. As a military wife since 1948, I'm just, I believe, I'm a firm believer of we take care of our own. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your generosity and time. Our next special presentation, while we might not have the paper behind it, we certainly have the goodwill, and that's Supervisor Michaels regarding honoring Kathy Stroll.
Thank you very much. And I've already admitted to my faux pas for the day. So I'm going to read this resolution, and then I'm going to come down and give you a hug. And later on this morning, I'll give you the resolution. It comes in the same green folder that you see every week, so, you know, it's okay. The resolution reads as follows. Whereas Kathy Stroll has been a dedicated employee of the county of Ventura for 28 years, starting in May '77, and has held positions as eligibility officer, eligibility supervisor, program specialist, human services manager, human services deputy director, and has received her Bachelor of Arts degree in social services and subsequently certificates in management development program and interface performance systems. Busy lady, but she's got a cute smile to her. Whereas Kathy has served on several state task forces and served on many county committees in designing, recommending legislation, and implementing welfare reforms, including CalWorks, the biggest challenge lately. Whereas, as the East County Intake and Eligibility Center Manager, Kathy was Ventura County's liaison with the Federal Emergency Management Agency Disaster Center in Simi Valley during the aftermath of the 94 North Ridge earthquake, and directed the efforts for setting up a disaster food stamp site in Simi Valley. Whereas Kathy, as Deputy Director of Transitional Assistance Department, administering the Medi-Cal Food Stamp, General Relief, and Food Stamp Employment Training Programs, led the Human Services Agency in receipt of the State of California Food Stamp Accuracy Award for two consecutive years in '01 and '02. And that, you know, given how people sometimes talk about government employees and waste and et cetera, that's something that we're all very proud of Kathy for. And it made us look really good. Whereas Kathy's personal vision of reach will leave a legacy for the Human Services Agency employees to continue to aspire to excellence. Now therefore, be it resolved that the County of Ventura Board of Supervisors wishes to commend Kathy Stroll for her 28 years of dedicated service to the citizens and to the county of Ventura. Best wishes to her for good health, happiness, longevity, good luck throughout her very much deserved retirement. Passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors on the day of 14 March '06. We were a little late in getting it here. But over and above what all these beautiful words say, Kathy is just a really superhuman being and a very hard worker, and has been such an asset to the county and to the Human Services Agency that she will be terribly missed and very hard to replace. It seems all of a sudden we're having a lot of retirements of key people. I was at one last week as well. And so with this, I would like to come down and give you a hug. And I would invite Ted and you to come up and say a word, and if you'd like to introduce your special guest.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Michaels. That really says a lot about Kathy. But Kathy is one of our pillars in the county. There's a lot of unsung heroes. Kathy is one of them behind the scenes. She's 28 years, 10 months dedicating her life and a good part of her life. And I can tell you that it's, she and I, she gets there really early. She's one of the first ones there. She's one of the last ones to leave, usually. And no one's not always happy about that, her husband right here. But my God, her dedication has been terrific. We will have a very difficult time replacing her, leading the two largest departments that we have in our agency. She does it with calmness, intelligence, thoughtfulness, and a sense of humor and love that is just so wonderful. And so Kathy, have a great retirement.
Thank you, Supervisor Michaels, board members, Mr. Johnson, for this resolution and providing the time to recognize my years of service working for Ventura County Human Service Agency. I recently read that the keys for a good farewell speech are be kind, be brief, be gone. I intended here to these keys this morning, but I'd first like to say that Reese Witherspoon's speech at the Academy Awards, where she quoted June Carter Cash, "I just want to matter," really resonated with me because my career with HSA has made me feel that I mattered, both professionally and personally. Professionally, I've been able to climb our agency career ladder that has allowed me to stretch and develop my skills for managing teams and leading people. Personally, I've been able to satisfy my need to make a difference through assisting many of the families and individuals that come to us to get their basic needs met that's necessary for their journey to self-sufficiency. I want to take this opportunity to thank my HSA family, some of who have joined me today, Ted Myers, of course, my fellow DEFI Director colleagues.
Ted Myers, of course, my fellow DEP Director colleagues, my BSD management team, and some of my friends from the centers who have taken time out of their busy schedule to join me today, as well as the many other individuals who work for our agency who have not been able to join me today. Without them, I wouldn't have been able to feel that I mattered because they are so important in providing the essential services and benefits to our needy families and individuals of Ventura County. Also, I would like to thank my husband Nolan, who has been very supportive during my career. And keep in mind, I am early and I do late, and I live in Simi Valley besides. Who's been very supportive during my career and often has been my sounding board and given me some guidance. Although sometimes that guidance has been so irreverent, I wouldn't be here today if I had followed it. But usually, he's always, he always made me laugh, and it helped me put my problem in perspective. Lastly, I'm looking forward to only having to do the things I want to do. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I say just a couple of words? I wrote Ted Myers an email to be given to you, and I hope that he did. But in the email, I identified that you had worked your way up there in the organization. And what I'm so impressed by your actions, by what you did, is you looked behind to make sure other people were coming up in life, all the people you have served out in the community, to make sure they have that kind of opportunity. And that's what I remember you for.
Thank you. That's a kind word. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful retirement. Our next 9:30 item is our-
There's a kicker card.
Oh, yes, there is. Thank you for reminding me again. Twice you had to remind me. Mr. Williams, I apologize. Please come up. You have 24 seconds. We added a second. We were debating whether it was 23 or 24 seconds. You get 24.
Sherilyn Williams, I'll point out that she's a 28-year employee. Mr. Myers has only been Director for a couple of years. So evidently, his directorship has something to be desired because I have business with that agency, and he's totally unqualified to be the Director of that agency. And the Brown Act covers that. My criticism, public criticism, will now include him to this board since-
You have exceeded your time by five seconds.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Our next item is 9:30, item 20, is our report on investments. Do we, ah, good morning.
Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, Don Hanson from the Treasury, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have on the investment report.
Do we have any questions? I'm just looking at the-
Good job, as always.
Our yield for the month of February is now 3.95%.
It's creeping up there.
Creeping up, slowly.
We have a meeting next week, and we expect another quarter percent increase, so it a little bit helps.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We have a-
Move to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Thank you. And a second. Seeing no objection, that passes. And our last 9:30 item is amendment, an ordinance amending our operations of the Camarillo Airport. I believe that's an ordinance for second reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
We just got one.
Good. Thank you for that. Do you need to read it in title? No. Okay, so having no objections, that motion passes. I guess we read it in title only at the last meeting on this. We can now go on to our regularly scheduled agenda and start off with item numbers at 23, I believe. That's our healthcare agency. And Ms. Scholman, welcome.
Good morning, Chair Park, Supervisors, Mr. Johnson, Linda Scholman, Director of Behavioral Health. The first item is approval of our contract amendments and purchase order agreements for various services. As your boards are aware, we go through the year and move clients around, and things change. And within our means, we go ahead and adjust our contracts to meet the needs of where the clients have had to go for services. We're also asking permission to hire through contract one of our retired employees to continue on some services through a grant, which will be really helpful to us, and otherwise make the budget changes necessary to accommodate all of these changes to the contracts.
We have a motion and a second. Seeing no objection, that passes. We also had someone comment during public comments about an incident that happened at Hillmont, and I would hope that you would be able to provide us all with a response or a report on that. Thank you, and corrective actions if necessary.
I'd ask to meet with you on it, Lynn.
Yeah.
Mr. Powers walked out with them.
Our next item is item 24. This is the Alcohol and Drug Program Position allocations.
Great. This morning, we're excited to ask your board to authorize the addition of three full-time regular positions to our alcohol and drug programs budget. The positions will be fully offset by drug Medical. This is a pilot program where we're partnering with the schools to actually create drug Medical certified locations in three schools, and through that process, be able to provide really needed services to adolescents who are struggling with alcohol and drug issues, and who, for all kinds of various reasons, would not come to clinics or come to services outside of school. But we would be able to provide those services now directly to them. Our hope is that if these pilot programs work out the way that we believe they will, that we would be able to offer to every school in the county the option of adding one of these positions and providing this service, and really ultimately start moving forward and really addressing the needs of our adolescents and their drug addiction programs. So, we're excited about this opportunity.
Thank you. And I know this is an amended board letter, reducing the amount-
Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't mention that, yes.
From 108 now to 61,000. Thank you. Are there any questions, Supervisor Michaels?
Just a quick question. Since this is a pilot, what's the length of the program? The pilot portion of the program?
That's a good question. Our hope is that, we made these regular positions because our hope is that it will continue. We need to monitor that the drug Medical revenue actually really comes in to offset the full costs, and also monitor that the usage of the counselors and the schools ends up really being to the value that we expect it to be. So, we can report back quarterly in six months and a year to see how long it takes for something like this to come on board and get into fruition. But our expectation is that within six months to a year, we ought to be able to have a sense that this is going forward.
Okay, well, I would request, since you made these full-time positions and not, excuse me, temporary like a pilot can be, and I have faith that your faith will come through, but because it is a pilot program, I would just appreciate a report back to the board in six months.
My pleasure.
A, to see if the program is working.
Absolutely.
This is important. And then B, to make sure that the drug Medical money is coming and offsetting the costs.
Great. Be happy to do that.
Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. I'd like to echo that request of Supervisor Michaels. It's one of the things that I wanted to do was to, since this is a pilot, I'd like to, it doesn't say in here when you'd be reporting back to us, so if you'd let us know when you're going to be reporting back to us, and then report back. The other thing I would just offer after being in high schools for most of my life and stuff, is that the quality of these programs can vary dramatically, and very dramatically, primarily based on the person and how they interact with those people. And one of my big concerns is that oftentimes with these kind of programs, people get to regulate their own workload. And human nature is such that people regulating their own workload, I have a concern in that situation. So if you would make sure that we have some way, and I'm not looking for phony statistics about how many, because those things can be manipulated way too easily. You know, how many kids have you seen, or whatever? That's not the issue. I just want good people that we trust to be evaluating this program and be able to look us in the eye and go, this program's really working. It's really having an impact on kids. And, you know, I'd want to hear from the quality people on the campus, the quality people, and I would hope that our staff would be checking that out.
Absolutely.
Because it can easily become just sort of a, not anywhere near as effective as it might look on paper. On the other hand, it can be one of the most valuable things that happens on a high school campus. It just can, that spectrum is really large.
Absolutely. And the measurements that we'll use, the true test is whether we're really making a difference in the kids' lives, and whether or not they're achieving sobriety, they're attending school, they're succeeding in their endeavor. So those are the measurements that we're going to want to capture to be able to demonstrate that there's an impact being seen in the people that we serve.
But those by themselves are pretty subjective. You know, are we having an impact on kids' lives? Are we achieving sobriety? Sobriety for one kid, sobriety for a kid that only had, you know, the kids that had the really severe problems, the kids that are the easiest to fix, you know, which, you know, there's so much that goes into that, and that's why. It's not a statistics-driven thing. It's got to be a common sense with good people, is the only way you'll know.
Thank you. Supervisor Flynn?
Yeah, it's not an easy task. It's difficult. We know that. We can have some impact, but it's good to work with, you know, families, mothers and fathers and so forth, kind of the whole group rather than just one end there.
I'm glad to see the state funding this program, and it is interesting to see that we do have more kids in that age level that are drinking than we do statewide that have problems with drinking. Any kid drinking's got a problem, I think. So I'm glad that it's going to go forward. But I also share the concerns to make sure that we're putting a full-time person in there if what happens if the funding runs out. So that's always a concern. Do we have a motion on this, then?
Move approval.
Motion.
With the request to report back in six months.
Motion, second with the request that it report back in six months. Thank you. Seeing no objection, that passes. And we'll move on to our next agenda item. Thank you for coming. This is in regard to Junior Lifeguard scholarships through the Channel Islands Harbor. Good morning, Ms. Krieger.
Yes, good morning, members of the board. Mr. Johnson, Lynn Krieger from the Harbor Department. This first matter has been under discussion, actually, with members of the Harbor Commission and among the staff for a couple of years. Because as the program has grown, some of you were here and remember when we started the Junior Lifeguard program nine years ago with 20 kids, and now we cut it off every summer with about 260, and are looking forward to a chance to grow even more. But our concern is that there are a number of young people whose parents can't afford to have them come. And I have to say, I've been surprised and touched by my own staff, who year after year step up to the plate and will help provide scholarships for kids. But that's very limited because we have a pretty small staff. And so there's been a proposal made that a small amount of money be set aside. The Boys and Girls Club is happy to make the identification for us of kids. We're very concerned that we have kids in our surrounding neighborhoods in Port Wayne and Oxnard who do not come, cannot come, and would really benefit from this kind of program. The excitement, the learning, and the self-sufficiency that you gain from this kind of thing. So we're asking for a small dollar amount to try providing this scholarship program through the Harbor Department for these young people. And it would be up to that amount because the Boys and Girls Club doesn't know right now how many people. It's going to be something that grows. Kids will be somewhat fearful at first to try it, but then as they do, they believe and we believe the word will spread, and they'll be very excited to participate. We're here now before the budget only because our enrollment is already starting, and we're usually full by April. And so if we were going to leave room for some scholarship students, we'd like to be able to do it this year. The Harbor Commission did look at this last week, by the way, at their meeting, and unanimously endorsed it.
Thank you. Do we have any questions on this?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, I do have one request, is that the intent of this is for our lower-income children.
That's right.
And I would want to see that that is how the funds are used. I don't see any criterias with this, but I would hope that there would be some criteria. And as I understand it, the Boys and Girls Club will make recommendations-
Correct.
And your staff will review, and then support the scholarships as appropriate.
That's correct.
But I would request that the Harbor Department do use the financial criteria as a basis. So those who could not otherwise attend because of finances are the only the ones that we are providing scholarships for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second emotion?
We do have a motion and a second. Seeing no objection to that, that then passes. Item 26 is another Harbor Department one, and this is regarding access for granting of a limited access for a area at the harbor, Silver Strand.
Yes, and I will-
Could I just one comment as introduction? I want to thank you for accepting the opportunity to carry this load for us. This is not a harbor issue per se. This happens to be associated with beaches. And there was, these kinds of requests come in, and as they get kicked around, GSA is generally the department they go to, but because of the proximity to the beach and Lynn's familiarity with it, she graciously accepted when I asked if she would carry this one. So thank you.
You're welcome. And this is, I'm going to do the reverse of Supervisor Michaels. I did not have a presentation planned for this morning, but I now have one. So just the opposite.
Hey, you know, you've got to be flexible.
So we didn't get to rehearse at all with these slides. So if I fumble a little finding where I'm going, please excuse me. Following up on Mr. Johnson's comments, this is not a county project. This is facilitating a homeowner project. The idea is here to, in addition to being somewhat unprepared, I am, oh, here it is. I'm unequipped. The idea is we have three existing, I have no idea how these were done, I wasn't here yet at the time, paved over easements of the 30-some public easements that we have to the beach. There is one right here, and I have some photos of the specific locations that I can show you. The proposal is to pave over that existing easement. The idea when it came to us is that there is no cost to the county. There are a number of terms in this short agreement that you see. The homeowner is to build it to county standards, to maintain it and insure it at their own cost. The term is until 2020 unless they either breach the agreement by not providing us evidence of insurance every year, or not maintaining it, or if they sell their home in advance of the term, the county gets to either reach a new agreement with the buyer or ask them to remove this improvement if we so choose. And that would, of course, be up to the board. It does provide some limited benefit to the county, and you'll see this in here, in that the paved easements tend to be better maintained because they're easier to maintain. The sand doesn't come through to the street. The bad news about sand in the streets is that it's presumed to have had contact with oil and has to be disposed of, so that's increased cost to the street department. It also is easier for us to maintain, and in fact, we find in the paved easements, often the neighbors maintain it for us because it is easier. They don't want to go out there with a shovel, like we go with a back loader, and move the sand around, but they will go out with a broom on a daily or weekly basis and keep it cleaned up. So it does provide some limited benefit. It provides a very limited benefit as well to beachgoers. It does make it easier to get that first 100 feet, but not after that. I should tell you, in preparing this, what looks like a very short, simple agreement, we did consult with the Streets Division of Public Works, with the Planning Department, with the Department of General Services, the General Services Agency, the CEO's office, and County Council. We also consulted with the Coastal Commission on a few occasions, and I don't have it in writing yet, but James Johnson, who said he didn't mind if I used his name, called me on Thursday afternoon from the Coastal Commission office and said they would prefer to have no further review of this. They believe it provides improved public access. And they believe that the county planning department, if they choose, it's up to them, would be able to provide a permit without any further review. They didn't want to spend any more time on this. Now, if I can figure out how this all works.
So I clarify, you say they did say that they believe it did improve public access?
Yes.
Do you have a letter on that?
No, I don't, as a matter of fact. No, he just called, and in fact, this week is their week to get out their staff reports for the April meeting, so I did not, you know, I really didn't think this would be a very big issue at the time. I will show you just a few if you, well, indulge me here. This is an example of an existing paved easement on Van Nuys, going to the beach. Similarly, Camarillo, going to the beach. And you can get the feeling how these easements go between the houses. And Los Angeles Street to the beach. This is Hollywood. I believe this is the easement that is proposed to be paved. No, this is the proposed site. Here you go. Now, this was just cleaned out about two weeks ago, or a little less than two weeks ago. Is that correct? ago or a little less than two weeks ago. Is that correct? We do it as the sand builds up. You'll notice many homeowners have these walls and that is in an effort to keep the sand, which blows particularly in a winter, windy winter like this one, keeps it from blowing into their driveways because they're out there every day. And you can see the sand piled up here. This is the particular homeowner who, who has requested doing this project.
That is a question and you may not know the answer to this.
Yes.
Is that like a Southern California Edison pole? Is that, or is that-
It's a street light.
So it is within the, is it the county that puts that pole there?
No, I, well, I, you know, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay. The reason I'm asking this is because I'm thinking that it would be nice to have a sign saying this is a public access.
And we're happy to do that.
Okay.
We have done that in other situations.
Instead of putting another pole, you might be able to use those, but okay.
Right. And we can usually work with them if it is Southern California Edison to get permission to do mounting. We have-
We use a deuce program.
Right. There are a number of, if I run through some of these other slides. Now, this will give you an idea. This was the view of the street at about five o'clock last night where we have the three paved easements in a row. It just gives you an idea why the Streets Department might be interested in this. This is the, an example of the sand from an unpaved easement just down the street. Same thing here, an unpaved easement. It's amazing what a difference. You think, you know, what is the big deal? And we did take a look at all this before we did it. And here is the proposed site right here. And there is the light pole Supervisor Park you were asking about. So obviously, now this is from the beach side, from the beach to the, to the street on one of the existing paved easements. Camarillo here, and unfortunately, this pavement, when it was done, probably should have gone a little further. There, we can't find any agreements on the record.
Well, that was done like in the 1920s.
In the 20s? Could be. I, I read on-
It was based on the color of the-
Yeah, this one is clearly more recent with the brick pavement. So this gives you an idea. I know there's been some concern expressed by some folks living down there, but I will suggest to you, I doubt you have heard from anyone who lives on the actual beach frontage because sand, I cannot tell you the number of complaint calls we get about. When are you coming down? When is the Streets Department coming? When is, you know, my driveway is being blocked? I'm tired of your, of your sand.
In my yard on a beach, right?
It's in your couch out there.
Fortunately, Jack takes the bulk of those calls. I don't, I don't talk to a whole lot of people unless it's a continuing concern. So that is why we prepared this. Clearly, it is up to the board whether this kind of a license agreement is a good idea. As I say, it is not a county project for the county's benefit. It's merely facilitating a homeowner's request and we are happy to proceed anyway that you instruct us.
Supervisor, please.
Yes, well, I really appreciate the, the pictures and, because it helps sort of make this come alive. And I know you had to do that at the last minute, so I appreciate you getting those pictures, showing the difference between the sand where you have it and the sand where you don't. You do see there is a public benefit. But the biggest issue for me is for people, for whatever it takes for, to encourage people to have public access to the beach.
Right.
And so, to the extent, so I'm, I'm completely supportive of, for me, the requirement would be that there needs to be signage that says, "Public access." That this is a legitimate public access. And some kind of common sense backup signage thing so that there are backup signs printed at the time so that if somebody pulls that sign down. If there's signage there that, so that people recognize this is, this is okay, then obviously the rest of it looks like a win-win. As long as it doesn't imply that, you know, because this is paved, you can't go on it, rather it's paved as, as public access. So that'd be the thing. The other thing, just while I have the floor on this, since I did get a chance to poke a little bit of fun at the request for the letter, I do want to, I do want for the record to point out, asked my staff to check. I was not the chair in 2003. I was the chair in 2004. I did make the request, however, I did make the request for the letter.
Went over my head again.
That's right. Yeah, from Boating and Waters, when I was informed of that. So I just wanted to correct that for the record while I have the floor. But, so the signage would be the big issue for me. Oh, yeah, the signage would be the big issue for me. I guess the other question I would have is, can they park their car? I mean, I, I think we'd also have to have some requirement that they can't park their car. You know, they can't use it sort of as a driveway. If they park their car there, it blows-
Oh, you mean the homeowner?
The homeowner, yeah.
We, we can add that restriction to the agreement if you like.
That's right.
It's, it's very clear that that is not the intended. In fact, in the agreement itself, it says that they are in breach if they do not. Ensure public access to the beach is not restricted in any manner in this access under this agreement, other than during times of construction.
And if they continually violate this, you said you were going to check and see how long it would be before we could ask them to-
If they're in breach, it's immediate.
Okay. Okay. So if they're in breach, we could say you have to remove the-
And it's possible if we're going to require a sign there that the sign can say, "Public access, no parking."
Well, there is a state, we could put in, well, I have to talk to the Streets Division. We've caused this problem before about the no parking sign. But there is a standard, state-approved sign with like a little sunshine on it that says coastal, coastal public access.
Coastal public access.
Yeah, if you approve that, that would be the same sign that's used throughout the state of California to designate a public access way.
Then that would be ours to do, not a commission of the individual applicant. And then, since you have many of those, and I saw a lot of those posts, you know, that go with them, the poles, so maybe we could put that in front of each one of those. Because I have heard that some feel that it, it looks like private property, the way that they're having it. Just another question, not meaning to confuse things, but is this a requirement, is there a requirement that it be ADA accessible? In other words, it can't be too bumpy, it can't be too steep. Is there any kind of ADA requirement?
There is not, but the proposal they've made is for relatively flat pavement with just an occasional stamping of a dolphin. So-
And you know, it also implies width. And one of those photos you showed, there was a lot of vegetation that was narrowing that access. I just, I don't know what kind of requirements that we have already in place that would preclude the narrowing of these accesses through vegetation or other means.
Yes, this does require a building permit and that will come through the county. So we can, we can coordinate if you like and raise those concerns that it stay full width to the extent possible.
Thank you.
They did, they did propose having a small cutout that goes around that light fixture with some planting there just because it's easier. But other than that-
It's on the priorities, the priorities to access.
Right.
Supervisor, please.
Yeah, thank you. I do think signage is really important. And people tend to use these access ways with private automobiles and trucks and so forth to get onto the beach. And there is one on the Hollywood side that's been asphalted. And the problem with that one is that people park there. So it's going to have to be some signage that, number one, this is public property, public access to the beach. And somehow, no parking sign put up because they violate it all the time on the Hollywood side of the beach to get constant phone calls. As far as the sand on the, on the street, that, that is a major issue. I think, I think it probably helps it, even though when the sand hits the concrete, it tends to slide faster. I'm not an engineer, but I thought about that. So as long as it has some conditions that, that it doesn't look like private property, you start putting plants there and so forth, it kind of looks like it's private property. People have to have that access. And so it's a very sensitive issue, I think. So with signage, no parking, public access, I think, helps do it.
Thank you. And I think those signs are very inviting too, as I use them myself.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Michaels. All of this concern about public access, of course, is very, very important. But do we have issues with people going on to private property? Not the access way, but has there been any incidences of the public not being respectful of that which is truly private property?
Oh, I'm sure we have, but I don't recall any complaints.
Not enough to be significant?
No.
Okay. Well, I would suggest to the property owner that maybe, you know, not in any way impede the access. And the signage is very good, but in somehow kind of delineate that, the start of the private property. So the public has an understanding, not with a sign, but, you know, something. So that it's very clear that this is public access to the beach and this is private property. Just to help the homeowner avoid problems. Are there any other questions? I do note we have a public comment, Congress.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. At this point, thank you, Ms. Krieger. Jean Fredheim?
I represent Mr. Gillis, the property owner at 725 Gillis Trust Properties. We owned 301 Ocean at one point and it was already paved before we bought the property and of course it still is. That was one of the, the last slides that you saw there where the walkway appeared to be kind of reddish. That's basically what we're proposing to do at, at 725. And I will point out that there are no signs currently on any of the three properties that are paved. When we owned the property for over two years, I certainly didn't perceive anybody having any problem knowing that it was public access. People were using it for public access constantly, which was understood and fine. There's no signs at these other two paved properties. There's no signs at, at the, at the access ways that are not paved. And some of them are just horrendous with sand drifts and very difficult to get through unless you're young and physically fit. So I just wanted to make those, those comments to you and, and thank you.
Thank you. And we do note that there aren't signs. But I think what I'm hearing from the board, it'd be nice to have signs even at the other ones also.
Yes. And I, and I don't, I'm not objecting to signage at all. But I don't want to be the only sign on, on the beach either.
So they'll all come to just yours? No? I got that. Thank you.
You don't want to be the only public access.
Yeah.
I can see the neighbors, no, the access is down there.
Thank you.
Yeah, exactly. All right. There's a saying by it.
Thank you for that comment. I think it's an important one and we'll look at it. We won't just do it for your property. It needs to be done for the other few accesses we saw, saw on the PowerPoint. So thank you for your comments. Anything else that you'd like to say?
No. Do you have anything else for me?
No, I don't think there are any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
With that, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move the recommended action with the addition of having public access signed as a requirement here. And to the extent possible for us to do signage, I don't know what kind of issues we may run into legally. I would assume that we can do it at the other places, but that you, to the extent possible, that we also sign the other paved access points that are, are out there also. So that's my-
Second, but I would ask that they all be paved. I mean, they all be signed?
It, it's to the extent possible. As long as a sign-
Exactly. Exactly. Well, you said paved and that-
Oh, no. All of the paved ones?
You said-
All of the access.
All the access.
All the public access.
And I said, what I was saying was not just the paved one, but all of the public access should have a sign that says, "Public access."
Between every house?
We have to look at the, how this is going, how this is going to look, you know. We don't want to-
You have to sign everything.
... on the beach. It's expensive.
I think the concern here, I think, is that it looks like private property. And so that's why we want to put a sign, because that's the concern we have heard from the public, is that if you, you know, pave these, it looks like it belongs to someone.
Okay, whatever.
So the, the motion then will stand then?
I think, Madam Chair, I think if you somehow can inform people with a sign, make
it, try to make it an attractive sign, it's for pedestrians, it's not for automobiles. So pedestrian public access, something like that.
And then, and then there is one that's out there that is pretty standard. Johnny, Mr. Johnston wanted to comment.
I was just going to say, I grew up in Belmont Shores, down in the Long Beach area. And I can assure you folks that particularly amongst the youth, that knowing which are the public accesses to the beach will not be a problem. Because my recollection was, is there was a shorter way to get there, even if it wasn't public access, we took it. And that's a problem for the homeowners. So the signs will be nice, but I, I'm sure the people using the beach will figure out how to use all this.
The great advantage of hiring somebody who had a misspent youth is they help us, they help us make common sense decisions here, right?
Well, but you said you'd been in high school a long time. I mean-
So the motion, and I believe we have a second, is to go ahead and allow for the access easement and then also put signs on other paved access easements that are out there to the extent possible. So with that, no objection, then that motion will carry. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Our next item then is item number 27 and this is regarding Electronic Recording Delivery Act. Good morning, Ms. Schmidt. Got you before 11 o'clock.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Johnston, Philip Schmidt, county clerk and recorder. I'd like to give you just a little bit of background about the Electronic Recording Act of 2004. I have been a member of the County Recorders Association of California since I started working for the Recorder's Office in 1990. I have been on the Legislative Committee of that association since 1994. And I am currently the president of the California Recorders Association. And this is the end result of an effort that we have been making since 1996 to get an Electronic Recording Act for California. Currently, we have two counties in the state that record electronically on a pilot program, and that is Orange County and San Bernardino County. Orange County has successfully recorded over 3 million documents in electronic format. And San Bernardino County has just started recording electronically. We faced a lot of uphill battles since 1996 when we started working on this with the California Land Title Association, the District Attorneys Association, and the Real Estate Association. But we've all come to an agreement that we needed oversight. And in 2004, AB 578 was passed, which gave the Attorney General's Office oversight over the Electronic Recording Act. The reason that we all agreed to this was to ensure that we had security in our system of electronic recording. Currently, there are 22 counties that have agreed to participate in the program in addition to Orange and San Bernardino Counties. And what I'm asking for today is an ordinance from your board to allow Ventura County to continue to participate in this recording act. First year cost is approximately $28,000, which will be paid for from the Recorder's Automation and Modernization Trust. So there is no cost to the general fund. What this will mean to the county is more efficiency for the public, for the title companies, for the lending institutions, and for the Recorder's Office to get documents through the system faster and eventually lead to that pie in the sky, paperless office that we sometimes dream about, which will never happen. If you remember a few years ago when we had a record number of recordings, we passed over two and a half million pages of paper through our office. And this will eliminate some of that. It will also eliminate the need for us to mail all those documents back. Last year, our postage cost for the Recorder's Office was over $140,000. So we can see a savings to this immediately, once we start recording electronically. It also, the bill allows us to charge $1 extra for each document that is recorded electronically. So the oversight by the Attorney General's Office will be paid for by the recording, simply the ones that are recorded electronically. And I ask that your board pass this ordinance so that we can continue to do this and improve our efficiency. Any questions?
Thank you. Supervisor Michaels?
Just one quick one. And this is going to sound silly in a way, but given some of the issues we've had over documents and providing stuff, the dollar, is that only applied to those documents that are recorded electronically? Does someone have an option to not do that?
That is correct.
Okay. Just checking. Most people would gladly pay the dollar, but we have to have that option available.
We, we actually have the option right now of charging that dollar if we wanted to, but we, we chose not to do that so that we could wait until the system was in place and actually get something for our money.
Supervisor, please.
You know, this does increase efficiency, but I do want to thank you for the service that you give. We hardly ever get any complaints and I've never gotten a complaint, a complaint from people working with the Recorder's Office. And yet you have a lot of public contact.
Thank you. Thank you. We, we have a tremendous staff in that office and, and they do a great job. And I'm, I'm very proud of them.
I was wondering, do you, is it in the foreseeable- I was wondering, is it in the foreseeable future that this kind of system can be integrated with the assessor's office's information?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, we're looking at enhancements now to the Recorder's system, which will integrate with the assessor also. The company that we deal with also has an assessor's package, and we can access it.
I know that office is tremendously paper laden. It'd be nice to be able to get them more electronically.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, good thing, then. Is there a motion on this?
Move approval, second.
The motion is second, no objection. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good presentation at the IT Committee, by the way.
Our next item is item 28. This is regarding rejecting bids, something we don't do too often.
Good morning, Chair Person Parks, Supervisors and County Executive Officer. For the record, my name is Peter Shadey, and I'm the Deputy Director in Charge of Design and Construction for the Watershed Protection District. What I have before you today is a request to reject the quotes that we received for cleanout of a debris basin that's located on private property. It was a project that we considered moving forward with after the fires in Ventura, the Hawke Canyon fires, and due to the cost, it's felt that Zone 1 can't really shoulder the burden of this project at this time. And I can answer any questions you have in regard to it.
It is an easement, a public flood control easement on private property?
We have no rights of way on the basin.
We have no rights of way? Do we have responsibility?
No, we do not.
Makes me wonder why we were going to go forward with it.
Well, it was a, the original construction of the debris dam was built in 1971. It was funded by the Corps of Engineers, and it was, it was a project that was implemented after a fire at that time. It was cleaned out once in '73. I don't, I have the historical perspective, know why we didn't obtain permanent rights, but I believe that it was probably due to the same condition we have with the landowners today, which is they are objecting to permanent rights on this property at this time. And that's probably what occurred at that time as well, is my guess.
Okay, and the bids have come in higher than anticipated?
Yes.
I move the recommended action.
Second.
Are you, just a comment, are you, or a question, are you going out for another bid?
No, no, the cost of this is so high, it's felt that displacing permanent capital improvement projects, the Zone 1 has something less than $1 million available a year for capital improvements, and by building this project, that we would actually be displacing other capital improvements of a permanent nature. This cleanout, it would be anticipated that within five to eight years that the basin would refill again, and that the benefit that's achieved by cleaning out now would no longer be there.
My understanding from Mr. Pratt was this was gonna go into the CIP budget on capital improvement.
Yes, Supervisor Bennett. For the record, my name's Jeff Pratt with the Watershed Protection District. It is going to go into the CIP. It's going to be, we're gonna look at this as part of a permanent solution to the downstream flooding problems. This is, Hawke Canyon is upstream of Prince Baranca. Prince Baranca, we've recently finished the studies on, floods in a 10-year storm as it is, with a burned watershed, or in a 25-year storm. With a burned watershed, it floods in a 10-year storm.
It's just gonna go into the CIP budget.
Yes, so...
Thank you.
And we do have a motion on this in a second? Any objections to the motion? Okay, seeing none, then that passes. We'll move on to our next item.
Rejecting it.
Yes, some, yes, we approved, we approved rejecting. And this next item is near and dear to some of our hearts, is Santa Rosa Park exotic plant removal process, and this is a two-phase program.
Good morning, Chair Parks, Board Members, Mr. Johnson. The next item's gonna be presented by someone that not all of you are familiar with. He's one of my colleagues in Watershed Protection District. He manages the Live资源Resources Division, their division that does all the MPDS, water quality permitting, all the water quality monitoring, and all the regulatory permitting. It's his first time before, he comes, he's been with us just a few months. He comes from the regional boards, LA and San Luis Obispo. Just need to get a heart to him.
Thank you, Jeff. Good morning, Chair Parks, Board Members, and Mr. Johnson. I'm here before you today to seek approval for an award of contract for the Santa Rosa Park exotic plant removal. As you are aware, the Watershed Protection District built flood control facilities on Lang Creek in the city of Thousand Oaks. As part of the project, we were required to mitigate a total of 10 acres for two acres of impact. This is a requirement of several agencies, including the California Department of Fish and Game, the Regional Board, and the Army Corps of Engineers. The mitigation plan has two components, removal of 8.4 acres of exotic plants in Canale Creek and Arroyo Santa Rosa within upstream and downstream of the park. It also includes the creation of 1.6 acres of riparian habitat, including recontouring 1,000 feet of Canale Creek's vertical bank within the park and planting it with native stream bank vegetation, including many oak trees. Both plans have a five-year monitoring and maintenance period in plans. District plans to begin the exotic plant removal portion of the mitigation plan this spring, hence we are asking today for you to delegate to the Public Works Director authority to award this contract. We anticipated to have the project bids prior to today, but the landowner consent is still pending. Director Contract Authority would save approximately four weeks, providing us greater flexibility in the contract award date. And as you note in the board letter, the project components are approximately $186,650. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval to this contract as stated today's board letter. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions. I also have staff available if you have details, if you want more on.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Supervisor Michaels? No, I do have a couple. One is that there's a desire to initiate the work as soon as possible to avoid the nesting bird season, and I'm just wondering, when does that begin? This is, we're now in the second day of spring.
Yeah, I believe it's already started. Wish we had started a little bit earlier.
Okay, so this says there's a pressing need to initiate this work as soon as possible to avoid the impacts to nesting birds during the breeding season, so is your proposal then to go forward during nesting season? Not that I want to delay it.
Yeah, we won't go forward in nesting season if there are any nests present, and it's, we have to move as fast as we can. Typically, what we do at the regulatory agencies in a situation like this, go mow it down so there won't be any nesting. The contract has provisions in it that if nesting occurs, we will delay the start of the contract date.
And as I understand, this is to remove not only like the arundo, but we're also talking other non-native species? For example, the eucalyptus trees, which have, as I understand, a lot of hawks and things in them. So I'm just wondering if this is the most practical time to be doing it? We've been waiting for five years or something, that maybe we should wait till after? I don't know if you have a biologist here, but that...
We do.
You may end up having to just take out the trees later and do what you can now?
No, we're gonna try it and see if it works. If it doesn't, we'll come back and reject the bids. It's on our work schedule to get done this year. We're gonna try and finish it. If the bird nesting prevents it, we'll come back and see it.
Yeah, I would think the Fish and Game would be concerned about you doing it during nesting season also.
Oh, they, they will be.
Why don't we wait for three months then? I mean, isn't that when the nesting season's over? I don't mean to micromanage, but isn't that about right? I don't, do you know what the period of time is? It's spring, I know that.
Yeah, the, well, I can let the biologist answer this, but the last time we waited through nesting season, we ran into another season where animals started moving in. There are a number that we have to avoid, but you may recall in Lang Ranch, we had that same issue. But it's, if your board would like us to wait, we'd be happy to wait.
Yeah, I wasn't aware, I know in Lang Ranch, it was, all the trees got cut down before nesting season. Did you have animals move in afterwards?
No, we didn't. Well, we had some nesting in the equipment.
There weren't the trees to move into?
Yeah, some moved into the equipment. We had to deal with that.
All right, they moved into your equipment, okay.
Yes.
Well, they need a place to live, though. I have a couple other questions and two regarding this. I'm really happy to see we are doing it in two phases, coordinating with Santa Rosa Park when that gets developed too. So that's going to be the terracing portion of this project, and then replanting of new native trees.
Correct.
And will they, will you have an ability to also use some of those tree planting to coordinate that with the park also as that gets developed?
Absolutely.
Madam Chair? Yes, Supervisor Michaels?
It seems to me that we should be able to give them the permission to go ahead based on a nesting survey and permission from the regulatory agencies. And that way, if they say it's okay to go ahead after they've done their biological survey, then they're ready to move. And they're, and I don't believe that Fish and Game or Fish and Wildlife or the Army Corps would let them go in if they felt there was a problem for the nesting season, et cetera. So if we gave them the permission today based on the biological survey, then they could move if possible, and if not, then they'll have to come back to us.
I would be more inclined, just because we have been waiting since 1999, I guess, for this, approximately six years. If we wait for the spring to be over, then comes summer, that would probably be a really good time, because they're not nesting there, and you don't have to worry about flooding and all those kind of things. So that would be my preference, would be going ahead and approving this, but with the instructions to begin after nesting season. We're removing, this is to remove a lot of plants and trees.
Well, it just seems to me that if the, if the regulatory agencies say it's okay, they're more strict than any of the rest of us, and as was indicated, if it creates, then another problem with a different, you know, animals moving in or disturbing the youngsters while they're growing up and learning to be independent, all those things that are a problem. And it's true, they do monitor that type of thing. I just, I feel very confident that the strictness of those regulatory agencies would prevent us from causing any harm, but would give us the ability to move forward should they give us approval.
What brought this to my attention is our own staff saying, "We want to hurry up before that happens." Well, it's too late. I don't know if they meant to bring this report to us earlier. It's too late for that. So it gives me the indication that staff also would like to avoid those impacts, and the way you do it is not to do it during that season. But, you know, it's up to the board. I can't support doing it during the nesting season. And there are a lot of trees, pepper trees also, eucalyptus trees and others that'll be removed as a result of this.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and try this, because I think that, I think that your objective and your goal will be reached if I'm gonna move approval and based on the authority to proceed given by the regulatory agencies. Should that approval not be given, then you'll have to return to the board.
And I would second that. I have to trust that the, our biologist will be working closely, and that we have language in the award of the contract that says to the contractor that it is all dependent on the reviews and permission of the oversight regulatory agencies from the state level. And we certainly wouldn't move into something that we would then be challenged on again by the state, or wish to get into a fight over it. So I think there's, again, I feel comfortable enough, there's enough caution in with the language that says, in the contract, that protects us, so, and protects the habitat area too.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second? I'll just go ahead and make an amendment that we begin after the nesting season, which would be, I would imagine, summer.
That, the motion maker doesn't accept.
Right, so I'm making a separate amendment, which would be an amendment to the motion, and if there's not a second to that, I'll withdraw it. Okay, I'll withdraw it, and we'll move forward then. Let's go ahead and, does everyone support the motion? No objections other than mine? Okay, then that, okay. Then we have two objections.
Well, so I'd like to ask some questions while we have the motion on the floor here. It's sometimes a little bit challenging to evaluate the arguments when you hear them right here on the spot, so there is a pressing need to initiate this work as soon as possible to avoid potential impacts to nesting birds during the breeding season. I think that's the issue, right?
Yes.
From your standpoint. So is it, is it, there's a pressing need to initiate the work so that we do it before the breeding season, or to initiate the work as soon as possible to avoid potential impacts to nesting birds during the breeding season? I guess that's what I'm saying. If there are no nests there, would we, are there some benefits to doing the work now? And I guess I want to ask our biologist to come up a little bit here too. What's the, and what is, what happens if this project, and this project on Santa Rosa Road, right?
Correct. Santa Rosa Park.
Santa Rosa Park.
Yeah, it's on Santa Rosa.
In your district, right. So what happens if this project?
For the record, my name's Pam Lindsay. I work for the Watershed Protection District. I'm their biologist. And we anticipated coming to the board sooner with this proposal. However, we do have language that does, language in the specification package that does avoid the nesting birds. If we do surveys, nesting birds are found, then we would do the portion of the work where the birds aren't, and wait till the birds fledge, or do work, or postpone work, or if there aren't any nesting birds, we can go ahead and do the work as planned. So Fish and Game and the Army Corps have urged us to move forward with the exotics removal as soon as possible to maintain compliance with our regulatory, with our regulatory permits, and knowing that we may encounter some nesting birds, some can be avoided. If we do surveys this spring, you know, they're coming up shortly, if we do find that there are just too many nesting birds to avoid, we would abort until probably July. So, and the regulatory agencies would probably agree with that, you know. Again, they want us to get the exotics removed, but they don't want us to impact the nesting birds, so they would like us to move forward as soon as possible if the nesting birds allow us to do that, if there aren't any nesting birds, basically.
I want to be clear on that. So regulatory agencies are putting some pressure on us to move forward if there are no nesting birds?
Correct.
They want us to get this done?
Correct.
Just because they want to get mitigation?
Correct.
Done at appropriate times?
It's because it's been six years or so, right? That's the urgency, not that it's...
Well, we had a specific time limit following construction to initiate our work.
Well, if I might be allowed, there are a couple things that the regulatory, one is the time lapse between the project and the mitigation. Two, it's to avoid problems, regulatory problems, that they would get entwined in. If we mow the stuff down, there won't be any birds, if we get there ahead of the birds. We're destroying habitat, that's the way it is. But it's exotics, it's, all the regulatory agencies say it's a good thing to do. Being an engineer, I have to listen. So we're trying to get in, to answer your question, Supervisor Bennett, ahead of them. If we find that we're not ahead of them, we've got options, working around, to work around them, that will be built in for the contract. But we, Supervisor Michaels and Supervisor Lawrence, Thomas, are right to the point. The regulatory permits are part of the contract document that gets signed. Nobody's going out there and trying to pull the wool over their eyes. We've got chips in the bank with them, and we don't want to let any of those out right now.
And they want the exotic plants removed?
They do.
Okay, so that's right.
Can I ask a couple questions towards that? There is a large row of eucalyptus trees. Those are scheduled for removal. You're gonna keep the eucalyptus trees there?
Those eucalyptus, the large eucalyptus trees on the backside of the property, the park property, as well as the ones on the city property upstream will not be removed. We're only removing small eucalyptus trees and some of the pepper trees that are in the actual drainage channel. We're not going above and beyond the banks.
If it turns out that birds are nesting in the spring when you're out there, and you can't cut those trees or take those trees out, then you'd have to come back and basically do it later. Would that be a more expensive proposal than just get the landscape folks out there and do it all at once, or having, having to have them come back twice because you have now segmented your project?
Well, we expect that the exotics removal will take some time, and we're hoping, and in other cases, we've been able to do part of the work and then the other part of the work, waiting for the nestlings to fledge, et cetera. It can cost more money if we have to get in and do it twice. There are two schedules associated with the contract. One is for the exotics removal, the other's for the year of maintenance, and so we will have, so if we miss a small spot early on, we can go back and get it during the maintenance period, so.
I'd like to answer that question as well. Yeah, in theory, it's more expensive. If we decide that it's more expensive, we'll shut them down. That's going to be written into the contract. If we can't, if the workarounds are just exorbitant, or...
We can't, if the workarounds are just exorbitant, or cause the contractors, give them some pause, it's written into the contract that we have this ability. In theory, that probably going to cost, to have that flexibility is probably going to cost us a little bit more than it would if everything were clean. But there's a multitude of these habitat issues that span the full calendar years, nearly as I can tell, and you're always paying just a little bit more to accommodate those issues.
If I can, a couple of questions. One, I mean, if you get hung up, so one of the issues is, if you get hung up, if you have other issues, and this thing ends up being another year, the cost could actually be higher.
Yes.
Okay. But Supervisor Parks, with this being in your district, I mean, whenever it's a close call, I want to try to be respectful of that. But my question is if, if, I mean, is there something I'm missing outside of, you don't want to bother the birds?
No, there's nothing other than, the intent of this whole thing was to come earlier so that we wouldn't be removing trees during nesting season. This came a little bit later. Now, the proposal would allow for that. To me, it's, you missed the window, wait three months, you know, and then you're in summer.
My question is, if, if there are no nests there, in other words, when they do the survey, if there are no nests there, wouldn't it make sense to go ahead and do the work?
Certainly, certainly. I just, I think they're, they've missed, they've missed their window, though.
So you think they will...
Yes, you've got a, you've got a creek, you've got birds, you've got, you know, I've got them around my house. It's nesting season, so. But, you know, I, my feeling is that we've, there aren't any major time constraints at this point, other than you need to get the project done. It's been five, six years. Let's get moving on it, and I feel the same way about it. I want to see this restoration, but I feel like we should do it right. And if it means waiting 12 weeks for the birds to finish laying their eggs and being born and flying away, let's do it, so.
But we, but we will do that if there are any nests there, right?
Exactly. Right.
So, so if they, if they do the survey and they find no nests, I just, can you live with that?
Yes, certainly. You know, I think it's rather moot. I think there, there's definitely nests out there, and I'm just thinking, instead of making the Fish and Game tell us that we can be proactive and say, "You don't do it during nesting season, you don't go and remove trees, so." You don't trim trees during nesting season. There's a lot of things you don't do to protect the birds.
Supervisor Michaels? Well, it seems, and I, you know, I heard your comment, and I understand it, about being proactive. However, it appears to me that if we're under pressure from the department, it would be better to do the survey and have that in, you know, in the survey from a trained biologist, and then Fish and Game has to understand at that point. Whereas if we just arbitrarily stop the project, I'm a little concerned about getting them angry with us, since we do have a good relationship with them right now.
Just, yeah. I'm just, I feel it's a good thing to be proactive and not be cutting trees down in the spring, in an area that we're trying to protect as an habitat, so.
I ask one final question, that, as I'm trying to go through this here. Does you, if, if we find the nesting birds, and therefore we slow the project down, does that make the regulators happier than if we just slow the project down on our own, right?
I don't know the answer to that question. It would seem that we would have presented a credible...
A credible reason why we're delayed.
And a credible try, attempt at getting the thing, the thing done.
I know with Lang Ranch, with the Lang Dam, went out there and just got them all cut down in, while it's still winter, before the spring came, just for this purpose. We generally do recognize you don't go cutting trees during the spring. Well, I didn't mean to delay the board here. I've kind of established my position. I don't know if there's any change. We had a motion, a second. We have three votes for that motion.
Supervisor Long had a comment, so.
Well, I was just going to say again that I think we have to trust the biologist, both our biologist and the Fish and Game biologist, and we work closely together on everything that we handle in the way of areas of mitigation. And I trust that if our biologist does a survey and they say, "Oh, we missed it, the window's closed," then, then we move on. And I think the point of saying, "Do we, do we delay it, or do we have the professionals delay it," and say to then our, our regulatory agencies, "There's evidence and necessity for the delay. We're in a better position."
Mr. Pratt, how long do you think it will take for you to get quotes, get, get the equipment out there and start the work?
We're, we're still waiting for the property owner, and that's highly dependent on the property. It's an out-of-state property owner. I understand they're, they're fine with the conditions, they just haven't signed the paper and sent it back yet. Subsequent to that, I think we have to go through the regular bidding process, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, so we're looking at 30 days by public law to bid, and it'll be a matter of two or three weeks to get the contract out on the site.
So you're, we're almost to summer, then? We're halfway through spring, I guess, at that point. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask, ask one final question? How long does it take to do the nesting survey?
To defer to, did you hear that, Pam?
Yes. The nesting bird surveys, we usually schedule two or three of them within a three-week period.
So you would be doing, if we approve this, you'd be doing that in the next three weeks?
Yes.
While you're, while you're trying to get the contractor...
And potentially, we haven't discussed this yet, but potentially, we can go, the arundo removal involves removal of the roots, that's the real work. Mowing it down is not a, a big deal. So we, pardon me?
We're not removing the roots.
We're not? We're just going to mow it down? And so we can, we might be able to get moving on that with a small contract sooner.
Uh-huh, right. So I guess I'm going to ask Supervisor Parks, with this being in your district and stuff with this, I mean, if, with them doing the survey in the next three weeks and they find no nests, you wouldn't, you couldn't, couldn't get yourself comfortable?
I've got my position, Supervisor Bennett. I just know is, you know, you don't trim trees even during nesting season. I don't want them removing trees. It sounds like they're not going to be able to start till May. Now, it's not even wait three months, it's, you know, wait about a month or a month and a half, so.
So what would your, what would your motion be? To approve the project, but just have a...
Yes, the course of where they're going to remove the trees, do it after the nesting season, which I believe is the summer. Am I correct?
When is the nesting season over?
It varies from year to year, but it's usually, usually July. So the pepper trees and other vegetation is, is kind of all mixed up in the streambank. We've got arundo mixed up with other things, so if you wanted us to delay just doing the trees until later, that's kind of the, that's again, another delay where we would have to split the project up, because the arundo and the other exotics are mixed up in the stream channel.
Okay, thank you.
So I didn't get the answer to your question. When's the end, and if we say postpone till the end of the nesting season?
You know, it can, there are a few birds that can go as late as August, and most are finished by June, July.
And that includes the fledging period, doesn't it?
Correct.
So the, in the case of Lang, as I recall, we ran into a problem that, I think it was the later in August, and, and then you start to start worrying about the rain, and October is the official opening of the rainy season of the water year. So if things get pushed around, sorry.
So if you made a motion to end to, to the, to the end of nesting season, I'm trying to find out what the options are. I mean, one is just go now, the other is wait till the end of nesting season.
The Fish and Game has an official nesting season period, don't they? And it has, it goes from, I remember it from my planning commission days, but I think it's over...
We have to wait until September 1st if we choose not to do bird surveys.
Okay.
So between, depends, sometime in, sometime in March, all the way to September 1st. So if we choose not to do bird surveys on any projects, we have to wait until after September 1st.
Okay, so that, that's Fish and Game requirement?
That is written into their Fish and Game agreements, their, their streambank alteration agreements.
So I know that a lot of conditions in Planning Commission, when I was on the Planning Commission and Council, that it actually had the dates when you couldn't be going into creek, creek stream beds.
Right.
Do you think it was September?
September is...
Okay.
Basically, the official end date on paper for Fish and Game.
Thank you.
And we still end up doing some level of pre-construction survey, just to make sure everything's out of the way.
You willing to wait till September?
I'm not willing to do it in spring, so that's my understanding. I don't mean to drag this out.
Isn't this a vote, is that already pretty much...
Yes.
I want to say I do.
But you're voting no?
Yeah, but I still...
And you're satisfied with your approval?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Approved on three, too. Thank you very much. And we've all learned so much from that. Item number 30. This is a ratification of an application for our Office of Emergency Services for...
Good morning, Adam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, Laura Hernandez, Assistant Director, Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services, and I'm here to simply ask your approval to ratify a submittal of a grant application under the Emergency Management Performance Grant for 2006. It's in the amount of $141,594. Not a lot of money, but it means a lot to the cities to whom we share these funds with. We received guidelines under this grant on February 21st, and had to work with the cities in turning around an application due last week, March 15th, which is why we're coming to you now to ask to, to ratify the submittal of this application. We do expect we will come back to you and ask for approval to accept these funds upon approval from the state. So with your approval, we'd like to go ahead and proceed.
Thank you very much. We have a motion for approval.
Move it, yes.
And we have to have a second. Good, thank you. I just want to commend you for the work that you're doing, and I know that you're under particularly difficult times, since we've had that, that leak and the lands right into the dispatch center, the operating center, the emergency operating center, so.
It's going to need some significant changes, I think, that we're going to have to look at in the future in terms of where we put our communication center and our EOC, so.
Certainly.
I'm sure the board will be hearing more about it.
We will be hearing more about it. And are you back into the government?
No.
Into, you're still in Thousand Oaks, then? The dispatch center?
The dispatch center's still in Thousand Oaks. They're making plans with cooperation of GSA to move into the GSA building on a temporary basis. We are not allowed to operate under the, in the EOC until it's determined clean, and that has not yet been made, that determination has not been made.
So is the EOC now technically in Thousand Oaks if we have...
That's our alternate location, correct.
Thank you for that. Well, we look forward to seeing how we're going to resolve this one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second on this one. See no objection, that does pass. Our last item, then, is our correspondence agenda. We have a motion to receive and file. See no objection, that passes. And now we'll go on to our closed session. Do you anticipate any announcements in the closed session?
No.
Okay, then we're, we'll adjourn from our closed session. Thank you.